Planning zombie commission for the city of Grandberry will come to order at 6:00 PM on Monday, October 16th, Grandberry City Hall, City Council Chambers. This is our record meeting tonight. We, public comments on agenda items that are non-publicary and agenda items. We have no non-publicary agenda items this, tonight, so we'll go on to see the consent agenda, approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of September 11th, 2023. Do I have any corrections or changes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Chair, move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Hayes to approve, a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Moore, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is D1, consider request, a request of award survey, INC., to replat lots 8 in part of 7 of the Aiken subdivision number 1 as lot AR Aiken subdivision number 1. The property's address is 2420, 2440, and 2500 East US Highway 377. You're in.
Thank you. This is our location map. Outlined in teal is the site that consists of three separate lots at this time. The applicant is proposing to combine those into one lot for commercial purposes. And this is zoning shown here, the commercial district is the property is owned and the proposed platform forms to the zoning requirements. This is the replat showing that property with its easements and all the requirements of the plat, all the notes and signature language, add a lot of location area. This utility plan, we use the utility plan as a reference document to also similar to evaluating based on the zoning, so that determines some where certain basements or other information needs to be shown on the plot. The applicant is asking for three variances, not to install and extend sewer along Old Grandberry Road, variance in water lines, and a variance not to install urban street standards. This site has well and sanitary facility. And this is the engineer's memo supporting said variances. Staff recommends approval of variances as both replat. And these are your voting options. If you have questions that you have to answer, thank you.
Thank you, Kira. All for the public hearing, is the applicant here or a representative? If so, would you like to speak? Any questions? If the applicant was here already, or any questions for staff? Or is there any questions for the applicants? No? Thank you, sir. Any questions for staff? If not, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion first on the merits requested, please.
Chair, move to approve variances.
Motion by Mr. Hayes to approve the variances as presented, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hallman, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And now entertain a motion on the replat request, please.
Chair, move to approve the replat as presented.
Motion by Mr. Hayes to approve the replat as presented, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hallman, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is D2, consider request of Jim Tang to replat lot 37 of the Wood Creek subdivision, section 4, as lot 37R1 and 37R2 of the Wood Creek subdivision, section 4. The property is addressed at 612 West Wood Creek Court. You're in.
Thank you. This is our location map. The site is outlined in teal. It's approximately 5 acres in total size. This is located in the ETJ. And some know that the city and the county has struck a new local agreement and we will no longer be seeing the plots in the ETJ. However, those plots that are already in for review may continue through our system. So this has been prior to that agreement. So here's the map that shows the site outlined in teal. The purpose is to subdivide two lots into one. One will contain the existing residential improvements and one will be proposed for future development. This is the replat showing the two lots. The utility plan is explained earlier, we use that to evaluate our application. Variances, the variances for roadway standards, water and wastewater. The site will be served with well and an on-site sanitary facility. This is the variance memo by the city engineering support. And staff is recommending approval of the variances as well as the replat. These are your voting options, thank you.
Thank you, Kira. For the public hearing, is the applicant here? If so, would you like to speak?
I'll answer questions.
Questions for the applicant, want anything on this? Questions, thank you, sir. Questions for the city? Okay, if not, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on the merits requested, please.
Motion to approve the variances as presented.
Have a motion by Mr. Moore to approve the variances as presented, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hayes, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now, gentlemen, if I entertain a motion on the replat request, please.
Chair, move to approve the replats.
Motion by Mr. Hayes to approve the replat as presented, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hallman, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, the next thing on the agenda tonight is to consider request of Ron and Tatiana Swerbs to preliminary plat, a 41.1279 acre tract of the George WB survey, extract number 350, as lots 1 through 6 of the Swerbs addition. The property is located at 3713 Paul V Court. You're in.
Again, this is our location map. This site is approximately 22 acres, again, located in the ETJ. The proposal is to subdivide the property into six lots for residential development. This is the first major preliminary plat, this contains the signature plots and other information proven with plots. These are the next two sheets of the plat that's proposed, so you can kind of see how those two sheets fit together. The lot arrangement is rather a fan shape with narrow lot that meets the requirements at the street. And the service for water will be provided by Alvo, this is their letter of service. Letter for OS and staff was provided by Hood County. And staff is recommending approval of preliminary plat. And these are your voting options, thank you.
Thank you, Kira. For the public hearing, is the applicant here? If so, would you like to speak? Any questions for the applicant? Thank you. Any questions for staff? If not, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on the preliminary plat request, please.
Chair, move to approve the preliminary plat.
Have a motion by Mr. Hayes to approve the preliminary plat as presented, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Class, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is D4, consider request of Brett Glenn Kruger for specific use permit for heavy freight is hosted. The property's address is 321 Doyle Street. You're in.
Thank you. Again, this is your location map. The site is outlined in teal, around that corner of Doyle. Site is about .3 acres. On the site is an existing residential structure and it is a bed and breakfast, it's been that way for several years and has four bedrooms. The bed and breakfast was the host with some property. And the site here is showing the zoning map with the R10 zoning, historic preservation overlay. The applicant has not yet proposed any improvements, so no historic commission review is required at this time. There have been three prior SUPs where bed breakfast hosted on this property for an extent of a period of time and staff is not aware of any concerns or inspection or enforcement on the property. This is the buffer map showing the site located there now. And the surrounding pink outlines are bed breakfasts and short-term rentals. There's one that's there to the right of the circle, it's the In-N-Out Lake Grandberry, it's known PD, I think we missed that catching map. The map is showing the SUPs, so maybe have to address that map up to show that in. And this is the site plan presented, shows the parking lot, provides adequate parking for the four bedroom and including the parking for the host. The next slide will show the floor plan. Floor plan shows the actual bed and breakfast locations within the dwelling. The upper floor is used by the house, not for the guests, but the first floor is used entirely for guests. And our zoning ordinance, section 11, 1A, specific use permit criteria. These, we review it all the time when we have a bed and breakfast use, so these go over whether or not the use would be harmonious, adaptable, and fit in with the neighborhood where the site is located. It meets all of the standards required and it would fit in. It's also located in a historic district, which is where our policy and the zoning ordinance allows these uses to be with SUP. These are decision-making SUP regulations. Again, it kind of circles back to those prior ones that state that the use would be harmonious and adequate requirements would be followed by zoning ordinance, city code, and so on. And this does. We also provide a notice to 22 property owners on October 4th through the mailing and then on September 30th in the newspaper. We've received no letters in support nor in opposition of the proposal. Staff is recommending approval of their standard conditions, where a five-year term, subject to site plan, floor plan, no more than four bedrooms. And then the last three conditions are our standard conditions that we always include in speak towards the zoning ordinance, the city code, inspections, and permits. These are your voting options, if you have any questions right now, thank you.
Thank you, Kira. For the public hearing, is the applicant here? If so, would you like to speak?
No.
Any questions for the applicant? Any questions for staff? We'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on the specific use permit request, please.
Chair, move to approve the SUP with the conditions just presented.
Have a motion by Mr. Hayes to approve the SUP as presented with the conditions listed, do I have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hallman, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consider request of Ford Shelby Incorporated for specific use permit for short-term rental STR, residential unhosted. The property's address is 522 Mill Street. You're in.
So this again is a location map. The site is there in the corner of Mill. The purpose is for a three-bedroom short-term rental unhoused. This is the zoning map showing the site with its 8.4, our 8.4 zoning for residential purposes. It's also located in the historic conservation overlay district. So it's the first time for this property for a short-term rental unhoused. It's not been any type of short-term rental in the past. And this is our buffer map showing the site there in the center of the circle and in the pink, the nearby short-term rental. The site plan shows parking in three areas. One is there's a garage off of the side street and then two parking spaces are provided in driveways that are existing. Based on the site conditions, there's a little bit of site improvement that might be needed in order to formalize those parking spaces, but you can see evidence that in the past that they've been used for parking. It's just grass is growing a little bit, I think. This is the floor plan showing the property, the buildings. And these are our standard SUP, section 11.1A, standards for the SUP request. And the request is whether the property fits into the area and if it does, it's a historic conservation, a historic district, which is recommended, and so probably there are three parking spaces, required three parking spaces provided. These are your decision-making regulations. Basically, reviews the same information, whether the site is harmonious with the surrounding area, it appears to be. We note that the headlights appear to be screened by existing fence that surrounds that area from the front. Also, there would be some distance, it looks like there was some existing shrubs that could also provide screening. If this, you know, we don't talk about this too often, but if the shrubs go away, they need to be replanted. Or if the fence goes away, they need to be installed sometimes, screened. Always needs to be maintained, that's all. Not to raise any concerns, just to mention. Okay. And we do provide a public notice by mailing out notification letters on October 4th to 15 property owners. And on September 30th, we provide notification in the newspaper. We haven't received anything in favor nor in opposition of this request. I note there are the conditions that staff is proposing. I think I included one that year, number three, so I'm striking through that and see that in your staff report, because I noticed there was a fencing front that will screen the parking, therefore I strike that. Otherwise, we have a one-year approval, we did that with the new SUP, so I can prove out the performance, subject to site plan and the floor plan, not more than three bedrooms on it, and then our three standard conditions that we always pose. And we're here at your slide for the voting options. If you have any answering questions right now, thank you.
Thank you, Kira. Open the public hearing, is the applicant here? If so, would you like to speak?
No.
Any questions for the applicant? Any questions for staff? If not, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on the SUP request, please.
Chair, move to approve the SUP, subject to the conditions as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. Hayes to approve the SUP, subject to the conditions that are listed. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hallman, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is consider the request of Progressive Motorsports Properties to amend the specific use permit adopted ordinance 2145 to allow for the operation of sales and service of new and used ATVs, motorcycles, and boats or similar craft. The property's address is 2332 East Highway 377. You're in.
Thank you. Again, our site here is outlined in teal, you can see the existing building and somewhat see the parking and storage areas on the backside of the building away from Highway 377. This application comes to us as an amendment to an SUP. They wish to expand the building and add outdoor display area towards the front of the building. Whenever SUP is approved, their site plan is ordinance and if they want to change, make changes on their site, then they have to come back for amended SUP. This is the zoning on the site, that dark red color shows heavy commercial, it's been that way since 2021. And also in 2021, they were issued an SUP for sales and service of new and used ATVs, motorcycles, and boats or similar craft. So let's take a look at their site plan. What I've highlighted here in the red outlines are some of the locations that they're proposing for their outdoor display areas. So that's taking out some of the areas that are parking and the curmature areas at the end of parking rows. Staff has evaluated that and confirmed that they still have adequate parking for their use. And the blue there at the front is where they would be adding onto their building. The back area has some storage with a fence with slats in it that provides screening. Staff is asking, and the applicant has agreed to provide better screening, the slats, you can see through those a little bit, so it's better to conform with the ordinance as much as possible to provide full screen, especially with opaque, not see-through. This is elevation, they are showing that addition, you can see it, looks like poles and the vertical poles there with the white sign towards the front. That's the addition area. And section 11, one SUP specific use permit criteria to determine validity of the request. So we have these, the surrounding uses are commercial and motor sport use is already there, demonstrating compatible nature. The area above the, above which is residential to the north, actually, it's good that. Let me try and get it right. It's actually subdivided already, you see that residential there to the north. And if I go back one more slide, it's tree, so there's a significant buffer to that residential area. I'll make a correction in our report when we get to cancel. But that area, this tree is what I was trying to explain, is undeveloped and that those trees, shrubs, and all that overgrowth provides some compatibility buffer between the uses. Also, the ordinance would require a 20-foot landscape area if those trees were cleared. Proposed activity is normally associated with the zoning ordinance use and it is in alignment with the zoning and city code. The use could be reasonable. The ordinances and the codes minimize the impacts on surrounding area. The improvements that they're proposing with this amendment would be in the front of the building, not towards the back, so that also further minimizes any impacts. And notices provided by mail to on October 4th to 22 property owners and on September 30th in the newspaper. We received no input either favorably or in opposition to the request. Staff is recommending the following conditions. All outdoor display locations shall comply with the locations shown on the site plan. And the existing hard surface areas will be conformed to the zoning ordinance with the building permit planned supplemental. Existing chain link fencing to be replaced or improved with an opaque screening fence, so if they can improve that existing fencing, replace the screen, that's the intent. And except by these conditions of developmental components, city code, it's already an ordinance as last one's a very standard condition. These are your voting options, and if you have questions, if you have any right clarification.
Thank you, Kira. Open the public hearing, see that we have applicant here, would you like to speak? Any questions for the applicant? Could you come to the podium, sir, if you would like? You have to turn it on, please, so you see the red light. Thank you. Mr. Moore?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
Have you had any complaints from the neighbors behind the building there?
No, no, there's a, there's a very, very large area that is back from the fence behind us with trees. I've talked to a couple of the neighbors when they got their announcements and they, they seemed very happy with what we had going on, but we have not had any issues whatsoever.
What kind of material are you looking to upgrade that chain link fence?
We were going to use a mesh slating behind the existing slating to make it completely opaque, it's the best we can.
All right, that's all I've got, thank you.
Any other questions for applicant, would you? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I get you a chart, thank you very much. Okay, any questions for staff? If not, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on the request to amend their current SUP.
Motion to approve the SUP, subject to the presented conditions.
Mr. Hallman has a motion on the floor to present, to approve the SUP with the presented conditions, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Moore, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is D7, consider request of Tyrone Development Corporation to amend that future land use map contained within the 2016 comprehensive plan on a 15.147 acre tract of the Island County School Land Survey, extract number 348, from retail office to low-density residential. The property is located in the southwest corner of the intersection of Nettie Baptist Road and Loop 567. You're in.
Thank you. So here's our location map. I apologize, we're still struggling with technology a little bit. Usually our sites are outlined in teal. The red outline on this map shows the location of the site for the future land use plan amendment. The site is about 15 acres in size and the purpose is to align with the future land use plan map and the zoning. This is the project that you saw in your last hearing where there's a condition made to bring the future land use plan amendment forward. This is the zoning, our seven is that light color, yellow, and the outline on red is the future land use plan amendment here. And this is the existing future land use plan amendment map or future land use map showing that existing retail office, which is proposed for low-density to align with the R7 zoning. And that's our analysis table for the application. Considerations for future land use plan amendments. The considerations include the proposed low-density designation would support that R7 site zoning, the property contributes to the community, low-density land use description suggests compatibility with residential, residential's land to all areas surrounded with the exception of the school, which is to the east. Nearby uses are similar with the proposed or like even. The proposed residential will offer additional property for residential land inventory. And notice was provided in the newspaper, notice is not required to the individuals. And staff is recommending approval. And these are your voting options, if you have any questions that we have to answer.
Thank you, Kira. Open the public hearing, is applicant here? If so, would you like to speak?
Just if there's questions.
Questions, commission members? No, thank you, sir. Questions for staff? If not, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on the request to amend the future land use map.
Chair, move to approve as presented.
Motion by Mr. Hayes to approve as presented, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hallman, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. The last item on the agenda tonight is D8, consider request of Grandberry 491 LLC to amend the plan development heavy commercial PDHT district, adopted ordinance 20-01. The property's address is 1380 East Highway 377.
Yes. Thank you. I usually hear my name, I just want to make sure you're done, thank you. So this is the site, the overall site is outlined in teal and the subject property that is coming with this application request is outlined in yellow. This proposal is an amendment to the overall PD plant development district zoning, which is primarily fully developed. There's a pad site that's currently under construction for a restaurant. And this proposal is for a restaurant improvement and to amend the PD to offer that particular pad site, retail as well as restaurant driven, which is our classification, and then also to amend the development plan for this pad site. So we'll walk you through this proposal. This particular slide shows the comprehensive plan. The proposed amendment is aligned with the retail office designation of the comprehensive plan. The zoning change, and I didn't have a zoning map for this particular project, but the purple is what we showed, your zoning of the PD. And again, I just reviewed the existing plan development is a PD heavy commercial with commercial uses and development standards contained for each pad site of the overall development. This particular site is pad number two. And this site plan shows the proposed development. In order to fit it all this way with legibility, I flipped the plan on its side, so north is up on your drawing, so Harbor Lakes is there to the up side of that large plan and the 377 is to the right side on your screen. You might be looking at your iPad and seeing something that has different orientation that might put in the presentation, I don't know. So in order to fit this site on the property, the applicant is seeking several variances or amendments to development standards. There is a future proposed right of way with increase along Harbor Lakes and that impacts the ability to place the building on the site and conform with the setback requirements. So you see that the access to the site is from Harbor Lakes Drive, those two arrows are going to build between the green Oh, sorry. Okay. All right. Well, sorry about that. I can go a little bit slower, but if you've got questions, we'll look and go over those too. So the little red arrows show the access drives through the property. There's a driveway that would cut directly through the property. The green box is the refuse container, which we access through an existing drive and parking lot area. And the blue box is their parking for the new drive-through restaurant. The dash line, dash red line, is the stacking and queuing for their customer service window, and then it exits to the property to the, let's see, that'd be to the west. They'll be obtaining shared access drives with the property to the west in order to make this work. So that's how the site lays out. And we'll go to the next slide, which should be the landscape plan. So the landscape plan, it just reads a little bit better. Anything that's not shown with the drives, or the building, or parking, or refus, or right-of-way is going to be landscaped in some fashion. It will be grass, or shrubs, or trees per code. They're asking for an amended standard for the parking lot. As you can see, even with the right-of-way, that's quite compressed, and there's not much space to put one tree, which is what that parking area requires. So they're asking for a relief from one tree for that small little parking space area. And this is the elevation plan of the Sycamore Scooners Coffee Shop. So here's the development standards that they're specifically requesting. To reduce the side street setback, which is Harbor Lakes Drive, from 30 feet to 24.6. And their side setback, which is the opposite or the west side, from 20 feet to 16. And their minimum lot width from 50 to 41, just recognizing the new dimensions of that lot. Refuge facility screening is required as a maximum room wall closure. They prefer to use what's called a width quick brick log, and I would suggest if you have questions on that, ask the applicant to come up on that. The parking lot landscape trees, there's one tree required, and they would have zero for that parking lot now. The site would contain other trees throughout. And we did provide letters on October 4th to eight property owners in the area, and we also provided notice on September 30th through the HCP notice. We've received no letters in support nor in opposition to the request. Your considerations are in this slide and in your packet. This is really just an amendment to the existing PD. So the zoning of the PD is appropriate, it's contextual to the area. Site is compromised in its shape and size, so the requested amended standards are also reasonable. Staff is recommending approval, subject to the standards that were presented in the application and will be contained in the ordinance exhibit. And these are your voting options. If you have questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Kira. Open the public hearing. Is the applicant here? If so, would you like to speak? If you would, come to the podium. Are you questions, commission members? Yes, if you could come to the podium, please, turn it on, we appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Will you just please state your name and address, please?
Hi, Taylor Fickner, 4113 Hill Court in Berlson.
Mr. Moore?
First question. Kira, could you back up the map to show the little red lines? I'm getting in and out of this place. I suppose if this bottom dash line is for the exit from the property, once they pick up their drink, would they be enough into the next parking lot?
They would, yes, sir. The adjacent property owner has been using that property to cut across into Harbor Lakes. They've wanted a cross these for quite some time, and by developing here, we'll be able to actually give them a paid cross-access easement, which they'll be able to use to get into Harbor Lakes. Then that will allow us to exit out into theirs to go on to Highway 377.
Okay, so by doing this, it would be an advantage for your neighbor as well?
It would, yes.
To get them in there from Harbor Lakes?
They've been very interested in this. When we first started designing it, prior to Tech Dot taking the red hashes, Tech Dot wants to add an additional turn lane onto Harbor Lakes, which impacts an exit going out onto Harbor Lakes. So that's a tight piece of property, so the only way to actually kind of conform to not only the coffee shop and the line queue we need, but with that encroachment from Tech Dot, we have to exit out to there, and that's what we're currently working with with that owner. However, they had a prior agreement with Cross Access before Tech Dot had given us the diagram and the plans of how much they needed to take as an easement access.
Okay, whereas that, as far as the negotiations with Tech Dot, they're all approved of, or in fact, rather?
Yeah, it's, I guess with Tech Dot, this is like phase five, so in speaking to the city, this could be quite a few years down the road before any of that construction even happens. And so what we've proposed is although that hash line will be eventually concreted in the turn lane, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna have some landscaping and do some grass and have that nice and manicured as part of the project until Tech Dot decides to come into it. But I don't believe Tech Dot has fully approved, I guess, phase four, the last part of that section leading into 377 and those, the turn lanes and everything.
So we're probably three or four years away from that even?
At a minimum, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Sir, do you have your access agreement signed with the adjacent property owner to the west, or is that still to be done?
We are working on it right now.
Okay. So then that leads my question to staff. Is that a condition that needs to go with any motion that goes with this, that that will be executed, or?
So we don't have a condition for that, but it will be needed as a result of the site design and that performance would be expected with the permitting.
So does that mean we need to put it in or not?
No, don't need to.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Glass?
I have a question for Kira. I'm just confused by the map. I'm very familiar with this area, I have no idea from looking at the map. Where's 377? It's hard to read the map.
Sure. Sure. So 377 is on the narrow right side of the presentation. If you're looking at it from your packet, it's probably towards the bottom.
What is there now? I'm trying to...
Oh, sure. It's a vacant home. It's a vacant property. There's a...
Used to be Mr. Spark with Car Wash. There's still a monument sign there, but that's it.
Okay. I gotta thank you. I had a hard time figuring out.
We probably have a hard time visualizing anything on that strip.
All right, thank you. I understand.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Any other questions for staff? If not, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to amend the planned development.
Chair, I approve as presented.
A motion by Mr. Hayes to approve the amendment to the planned development. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hallman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. There will be no further business tonight. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.